We're good?
Good.
Okay, like to call the Public Safety Committee meeting to order and restore our businesses to accept the minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes for March 2nd?
So moved.
Dave, do you have a second?
Anyone on the screen?
Sue.
Sue, thank you, Sue. All in favor? I oppose. Very good. Department reports, Dan Sullivan? You're muted, Dan.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to go over the last year, 2020, give you some numbers here. Obviously, the pandemic affected a lot, but I still got a lot done. I did 120 inspections as opposed to 170 that I did in 2019. I tested 736 devices as opposed to 834 in 2019. And I took 44 gas and four diesel samples for the state petroleum quality project. I only calibrated one milk tank, which was weird. And because in 2019, I did nine, I think the year before I did 14. Um, so yeah, obviously, having three months off, I wasn't able to accomplish everything, but I, the thing that really suffered was farms, my farm stand scales. But I was able to actually pretty much do everything else, including all the gas stations and fuel oil trucks. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Dan, did you find any violations or was everybody up to code?
Pretty much everything is good. Of the devices I tested, 97% of them were correct. 2019 was 93%. I didn't handle or didn't hand out any penalties. There was only one written or yeah, written warning I had to give out. But other than that, everything was good.
Any questions for Dan? Anything else, Dan?
Um, no, I don't think so. I should, I'm on track to do everything this year, so hopefully we get it all done.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next up, John Graham? John, not here?
Yep. Good afternoon, everybody. Today, I just wanted to go over, give you a brief look on our fire inspection plans from here on out. The, I'll start off with the immediate plan and then what I have in mind for future stuff. But for right now, we're going to be focusing on residential occupancies. What I did was compile a list of the most, or the properties with the most units. Um, so like some of them have 48 units, some of them have even more than that. So we pulled all of those out, we're working on those. And then any of those properties, we called the landlords if they have additional ones, you know, smaller, smaller properties or something. Um, I figured that way we'll get the most units with the fewest phone calls to help save time. Both of our fire inspectors, Chris and Don, they're now certified with New York State. They're up to the landlords, setting up an inspection, or setting up inspections. They've already gone out on some of them. They have, I think it's that one with the 48 units, they have that on Thursday. Uh, if there's no up-to-date contact phone number for them as they're calling through them, it's going to take a little bit longer because we'll have to send out letters to try to get ahold of the landlords. If we don't get responses for those or from those, then they'll probably have to go knocking on doors to talk to renters to get contact information for them that way. Chris and Don, right now, will be working together until Don has had some more training, hands-on training with the residential properties. But as soon as he's comfortable with that and Chris shares with me that he thinks he's comfortable with it, then they'll go separate. Steve is also going to have some time that he can help with that. Steve used to be the fire inspector, so he's also going to jump in when he has the time to help with those inspections. Uh, future plans, I got two different things that eventually, oh, I've got to do more investigation on them, but they'll eventually end up going to the, to the board to talk about. But our inspections right now are on a 36-month rotation. So everything that we have on our list is going to be hit once every 36 months total. I don't know if I said that very well, but. So what we would do is an apartment registry, which I've mentioned before, we would let the landlords know when their time in those three years is due. So, you know, we'd have like year A, B, and C, and year due December of year A from here on out. So it would be up to them to coordinate between us and their renters when the time comes closer for them. Scheduling right now is a major time consumer. I've spoken about that supervisor award. So doing it that way would put more of that part on landlords and give us more time to be out in the field. We'd have to set up fines for non-compliance and things like that, which is what I'm going to kind of compile and present to the board here, hopefully shortly. The second thing that I would like to do long-term is there's a web service out there called the Compliance Engine. We spoke with Saratoga City Fire Department a couple of weeks ago. They use this, it's for any third-party inspections that have to be done, so like fire sprinkler systems, smoke alarms, that kind of stuff. We don't do those inspections ourselves. The people are, you know, that they have to get those services provided for them and they give us the report when the time comes. This company would handle all of the phone calls and the letters and all of that to the folks that need those inspections done, so that when we go to do the inspection for the rest of the stuff, those third-party inspections are already complete, we already have the paperwork on hand, we can wrap it up quicker. But like I said, that would be something I'd had to bring to the board. There's no fee for the county on that one. There's a, at the moment, it's a $15 fee per inspection. That would end up going to the people needing the inspections, but I'll give you more details when we get closer to that. So, um, yeah, do you guys have any questions so far? That's a quick summary of where we're headed, but it's the, I think, the quickest way to be able to get the most inspections done in a shorter time at the moment, so.
And John, the Compliance Engine web service, what, what would they do, businesses? What would be their main area of responsibility?
The way that it would work, they handle all of the, what would be referred to as vendors. So like, say, company ABC does fire inspections. The business that needs that fire inspection would call up ABC. They would go out, they would do the inspection on the fire sprinkler system, and ABC would go to the Compliance Engine website and upload that information, uh, so we'd have access to it. Every time they upload something, it costs ABC $15, but they would just be passing that on to the business that called them in the first place. But the Compliance Engine, what they're doing behind the scenes is notifying the businesses, you need this inspection and this inspection by this date. If they don't hear back or they don't get a response, you know, where the thing is uploaded, they handle all the paperwork, sending it out again, all the phone calls, reminding them two or three times or whatever it is. So that takes all of that off of our plate, saves us time in the office so we can get out in the field, so.
And Saratoga Fire Department, that's, they use that?
Yes, they use them. There's, there's actually quite a few more now in New York that are using them. I want to get more information about it before I present it full, you know, full to the board here, so. But it looks like it'd be a very useful tool to help us be able to meet what we're supposed to be meeting, so.
Dana Haff?
John, educate me a little bit. Currently, the landlord would have the inspection done and would pay a fee to Washington County to have this done, so it would be budget revenue. But with this change, the landlord still pays a fee, but it no longer comes to the county. So what happens to the county's revenue side of the budget?
As far as the apartments, well, as far as inspections, all of those buildings that we've talked about before, the different occupancies like, like apartments or assemblies like restaurants, things like that, they would still have to have us go out to do our parts of the fire inspections. Most of the places like the residences, the apartments, they wouldn't need to use their other servants because they wouldn't have the requirement of, you know, fire sprinklers for some of the smaller units and things like that. That fee that we would collect for the county would be paying for our time going out to do it. If they have those 30 or those third-party inspections that they have to do, which they already now have to do it, they would be paying most likely an additional $15 to them to cover the services of the Compliance Engine website.
So to the landlord, they're going to pay an extra fee, which is to the Compliance Engine, because they're still going to pay the fee to the third-party inspector?
Yes, either they're still paying a fee to the third-party inspector, but now it would be, potentially be $15 more. But that's not going to be as much with the apartments as it's going to be with the other occupancies like restaurants, you know, assemblies like that or storage facilities. They would be the ones that would probably feel it more than the apartments.
How do you currently get the reports from the third-party inspectors?
We usually have to chase them down. They're supposed to be left at the site. So again, referring back to ABC, they call up the place to get their fire sprinklers checked. That company is supposed to send the report to ABC so that when we show up, we have a copy of it. A lot of times, that doesn't happen because ABC hasn't gotten on, you know, setting that up. So then we have to track it down, we have to keep reminding them, or we have to call up the fire sprinkler company and say, hey, can you send over a copy of compliance?
If a landlord pays a third-party inspector to do it, can they send the report directly to you or are they forced to be a customer of Compliance Engine?
Those are the things that we need to discuss. If it would be something that, because that's what's happening now, they would be the ones that would be sending us the report themselves, but they wouldn't be, we wouldn't be getting the benefits of the Compliance Engine making all the phone calls and sending out all the letters and things that way. They, they get their money by those uploads.
But if it's a service the landlord does not want to use, how can they be forced to use that if the landlord says, okay, it's in the mail and they send it to you and you actually receive it?
That's all discussion that we'll have to have later. Saratoga City actually had their governing body put it into law that they had to use the service.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for John? Anything else, John?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Tony?
Good afternoon. So first thing on our agenda is the Crime Victims Week proclamation. I hope a copy of that has made its way to you. We asked that, within the years past, we would have that signed by the chairman at the meeting, which would be in April, and that, which works out perfect because this year's Crime Victims Week is the week of April 19th, so just after your meeting.
Yeah. I, I attended several of those events down at the Department of Justice a long, many years ago, and they're, they're really, they're really decent events. And I had just looked on, online, and the, the theme this year is support victims, build trust, and engage, engage communities. So, so it's really, it's a really good effort and to recognize those that, that handle crime victims. I think it's a, a good, a good effort. I'm glad you're bringing it forward, Tony.
It really is. It's unfortunate, again, this year, we won't be able to have the breakfast because of the continuing restrictions, but, you know, it's still important to recognize the efforts. So we appreciate the support from the board. And really, the board has done a lot. I mean, going back to when I first started, you all funded a part-time position that really allowed us to jump into the grant opportunity when it came up. And now the state funds really a significant portion, I would dare say, over 90% of.
Do we need a motion to bring that to the board?
We very appreciate your support. So, thank you. Number two is a mistake on my part. That actually can be done by approval of the county administrator, so I was reminded of that gently this morning, and so I forwarded that on to Melissa for her, for her review and hopefully approval. But the last item that I have on my agenda, unfortunately, one of our legal assistants is relocating to just outside Scranton, PA, which she's decided would be too much of a commute. So she is resigning effective April 7th and looking for, backfill that position.
Do I need a motion to move that personnel? Dave, second? Sue, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. We'll move that on to personnel. Anything else, Tony?
I think just as a heads up, I see the sheriff has joined us. By the end of today, I suspect that the very large marijuana bill will have become law. And I think where we will see on a public safety side and immediate impact that will need attention would be an increase in the number of drug recognition experts in the county DREs. And, you know, that will fall primarily to the sheriff. And I, I think that's one area that I think the county, based on my initial review, would kind of want to begin looking at. We, we've, we attempted to address some of the gaps that existed from a public safety side, some we were moderately successful on, but many we weren't. And one of the major gaps in our law will only be exacerbated by this. So having an increased number of drug recognition experts, I think, will help the county at least offset some of the expected problems that will come from a public safety standpoint on the roads, which is, you know, it's not a surprise, it's consistent with what every state that's passed it has encountered. And I think it's just a way for us to be on the front end of it rather than reacting a couple of years down the road.
It, it sounds like what I had read that would be a year and a half to two years before they have the regulations in place, and that should give us enough time to prepare.
Well, but the, the effective dates of many of the provisions are, are staggered and not delayed. So there are some that are, will be effective almost immediately upon signing. Some will be the, the active promotion, if you will, or, or sale, where the county will have to decide whether or not to have dispensaries within its county. That will be later down the road, but there are other pieces of it, components of it that will take effect much, much sooner. So we don't have that same window across the board, which is added to.
Sheriff, would you like to comment?
Sure. Yeah, in typical, typical New York State fashion, the monies earned from the sale of marijuana will be used to train the state police only in DRE, which drug recognition expert training is very extensive and takes quite a while to complete. But just like our 911 tax surcharge for the, for the 911 center, just like all that money goes to the state police and built that Taj Mahal down in Latham, they're going to use this money to train all the troopers, which is very nice of them. It leaves the counties and the villages and the cities on their own to do this training. So we've obviously voiced our concerns about that along with the fact that, you know, the legalization in Colorado was a colossal failure and led to, or drug-related fatality accidents, like 120% increase or something like that in crime rates and everything else. But, you know, we're, once again, we're, we're going to have to live with it and we'll find a way to get people trained. We currently, we're down to one DRE, but there's, I think it's the only one in the county, and most agencies don't have any. So it's going to be a bit of a lift to get that done, but we'll get it done.
How much is the, the cost for training?
Well, it's more the, the time involved, like it was in Florida, that you had to send people to go to. They've done a lot to make it more available, you know, to different areas and we don't have to travel as far to do that. But it's extensive, it's very difficult training as well. It's not, you know, just a regular course that you would go and, you know, take, take a test or whatever. This is where they, they actually have to, they use people that are under the influence of drugs, and they test them to learn how to become a drug recognition expert. It's very difficult to achieve, and then you have to maintain that certification through, I think it's annual or semi-annual testing and recertification. So it's more the process of it, it's not so much the expense, but depending upon where the training is, it could, that could be an expense. But we would try to host, like we'd try to do with most things, we would try to host it, if, you know, COVID allows it, we could host it at our facility and probably get a reduction. And like the district attorney said, it will be a little while before a lot of this kicks in fully, so we do have some time to figure that out.
Any questions for Sheriff Murphy or Tony? Bob?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you had any kind of different idea. I mean, I know there's always the expense, but what about the amount of time? I sent one guy, but it was just one of those, just early on with the DRE, and it, he was gone a month, he had to go to Massachusetts, and it took a full month to get certified. Is it still that long a process or is it worse now?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was saying, it's not so much the expense, it's the time. And I, I think it's at least that, it's at least a month. And, and before, like I said, they used to trap to travel quite a ways. But yeah, it's extensive training. So again, you know, it's something that, it, every agency is going to face this, this issue. And, you know, some agencies, quite frankly, might not take the initiative to train officers, but we certainly want to and want to have as many as we can. And, and obviously, you know, we'll look into the, the easiest way to do that. Like I said, we're fortunate to have the facility, we have to, to be able to host training like that.
Dana Haff?
Sheriff, is that only until field sobriety test or whatever you would call it for marijuana? When technology kept, catches up and that comes out, would that put an end to having to train somebody to recognize the signs, much like DWI is now?
The, if, the, the challenge with that becomes, in order to arrest someone under New York law, which is very different than, than I think almost every other state, if not every other state, in order for the officer to arrest an individual on suspicion of driving while intoxicated or impaired by drugs, they have to be able to name the drug. And with alcohol, it's easy because you get the odor. And so we, you can't, like, they don't have the ability to arrest someone unless, and that's where the DREs become so critical, because they can do the roadside tests to determine by name what the impairing drug is. The good news is currently, under the DRE training, cannabis is one of them. But, you know, that becomes, that's where the challenge is, so, I mean.
Is it just a matter of legislation to change like all the other states?
Well, yes, but there has been abject refusal by New York to even consider that. So that's where we're, we're stuck. And right now, they've been studying and attempting to develop comparable tests to the breath alcohol content tests that have become standardized. And, you know, for years, they've been attempting, and they're, because of the impact that cannabis has, THC has, is so very different than alcohol, they, they've not been successful. And, you know, the, the notion that they'll have that done by December of this year is fool's gold at best, but the law will be the law without it. So that's, that's where the DREs become important.
But Tony, marijuana has a distinctive odor. Can't you say the same thing for alcohol?
Exactly. As part of this, they've added edibles are, are permitted, and so there are no odors with edibles. And so that, that's an added concern. So someone could be impaired without having the odor of marijuana on their breath. And, and that will be, that will be an added challenge, again, that can help with, with the DRE.
Thank you.
Yep.
Right? Yeah, so at our inter-county meeting the other day, it was interesting, they were explaining how this was all done through the budget, or is going to be done through the budget, I guess you'd say. And some of the ones in the north country were adamant that we worked so hard to stop drivers impaired and deaths from DWIs and all those things. And now you brought back a whole new platform where people are going to die from people that are impaired, that nobody even knows are impaired. And, and that's a huge, a huge problem. And there was a couple of other things they discussed on, on the marijuana as far as taxing and things like that. And we're going to be able to decide, I think, by town, not by county, on where the sales are. I think that's going to be one of the new things that's in there. But it's only on sales, you're not going to be able to select whether use is allowed or not, that's, that's going to be allowed. So it's, it's just being, the table's being set for us and, and there's nothing we can do about it but conform to whatever we can do to keep it under control. And it's, it's a bad trade-off for, for revenue, but it's what, it's what King Andrew wanted to do, so it's where we're at.
Any other questions for Sheriff Murphy or Tony? Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Tony. Thanks, Sheriff Murphy. Mike Ray?
Good afternoon. I just want to give you a brief update of what's going on in our office. Currently, we have 100 clients unreleased under supervision. Those are the clients that are released while their cases are pending, some are required to call in daily, some weekly, and about 20 are on electronic monitoring house arrest. As we move into spring season, we're, we're active out, starting spring cleanups in cemeteries, parks, and the feeder canal will be out, starting that next week. We'll also next week be out at, on Shine Hill, doing roadside pickup with a group of juveniles through our community restoration project, and we'll coordinate a pickup of that trash Dana with your BPW chief. Painting, when the weather gets a little nicer, we're going to be able to complete the Town of Cambridge finally, after two years of Cassie. The lift is fixed, I spoke with BPW today. So we're going to be able to finish the north side of that building. And the other painting projects include the Town of Greenwich, Moss Street Cemetery, and some benches that are up in Fortin that we couldn't get to last year. So we're, we're moving along and we'll be also on roadside after we do Shine Hill, we're going to be moving up to 22 where the pull-offs are and doing roadside there. And also on update, I've been working with the sheriff. We, we hope next month to present to you the lead program that we discussed, the free arrest diversion. So we're continuing fine-tuning the training program for law enforcement on that. And lastly, the sheriff's camp is tentatively slated to run for the last week in July. We're planning like we'll be in a position where it's safe to do that and they're going to hold it. So we have 17 youth that are working with the sheriff and DSS that identify between the ages of nine and 12 to go to that camp in Caroga Lake. It's a great opportunity as long as it can be done safely, so. So that's all I have at this moment. Any questions at all?
Any questions for Mike? Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, everyone.
Probation, Dan?
How you doing? Just wanted to just give a brief update. I mentioned last meeting that IT was going to assist our department with doing kind of an interactive meeting with Automon Company about a probation case management system. We conducted that meeting. I'd like to thank IT because they sent three staff members to do a virtual hands-on interactive meeting, which without them there, it would have been difficult. It was like having three translators on the call with me. I don't consider myself to be a novice at using the computer, but I was in a completely different league with these people. So I really would like to thank them for doing it. It was a great presentation, a lot of opportunity for our department. We are the last department state to not use this program. But there were a lot of overlaps and we identified those overlaps at the meeting. We talked about it. I think that IT and myself agreed that it is something we'd like to do in the future. I think it's something that we would like to explore, not in the short term, but in the long term. And then work with the board on the budget implications of that because it is not free. It is around high 60s, $60,000, $70,000 to buy the program, depending on the options. And then there's annual maintenance costs of $15,000, increasing every year. They only give you a three-year window to show you how far it's increasing. So it gets a little scary when you project out past that three-year window. They give you options to buy it over three years, but you're still paying $100,000 over those three years, one way or another. So whatever decisions are going to be made, this is going to be a joint decision between our department, IT, and your board, that's for sure. So, but I would like to say thank you for them because they providing three staff members for one meeting was a big deal for me. Something that I want to just bring attention to because I don't know if it's going to happen in the future, but I've been given a warning from the state that a lot of probation departments have been receiving audits by the comptroller's office of their restitution accounts. This doesn't bother us too much because we receive audits pretty regularly. Either a program audit from DCJS, comptroller's office can audit, or the county can order an audit. So we're not nervous about that. But due to the size of our staff, I think that most of you understand the comptroller's office is going to flag us for certain things. Segregation of duties is always a very difficult thing to do in a small office. So just like small schools and other organizations that only have a few people working with money, they're going to always say that they want more hands in the process to stop fraud, to oversee things. And we do as much of that as we can, but we're a pretty small department. So we do a pretty good job of making sure we segregate our duties the best we can. But what I'm going to request, and it was actually advised by the state to reach out to our treasurer's office to have them review our policies and procedures, how we do things, and to make sure that we're at least functioning in a manner that is consistent with the treasurer's office in the county. And we've always taken guidance from them anyways, so we're pretty comfortable with that. But just wanted to throw that out there in case for some reason in the next year or so, you get a notification that we're going to get an audit from the comptroller's office. I don't anticipate it, but as a new director, a lot of times they choose to audit you in something. We look back at the last two, Anthony and Joe McMurray were both audited in two different areas just because there's a change-up and you come under their eye. So they throw somebody out to look at you. The last thing, not to jump back on the marijuana conversation, we're pretty comfortable program-wise with that. But I think that there probably needs to be discussion amongst the board. And I know I'm going to reach out to the county attorney about how to handle staff members with this, with legalization. Uncharted territory for us at this point. Our office is a little bit different because we carry firearms. So that one is a big deal. And I know that I'll be discussing this further with Sheriff Murphy. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention that maybe this is going to cause a bigger conversation for all of us.
Anything else, Dan? Any questions for Dan? Thank you. Next up, public safety, Glenn? Tim, I need Tim.
Good afternoon, everybody. I sent our report ahead and have some printed copies up there. Just a couple of budget cleanup things from 2020. Our first is just our cleanup personnel-wise from the COVID-related personnel overage. So we're looking for a budget amendment just to cover that. We had enough in a 0.4 account from last year that we tabled some projects that we couldn't get done because of COVID that we can move to cover the overage there. So we just need a budget amendment for that, which is item one on our report.
That's the first page on your guide?
First page, the 2020 cleanup. And that is the first of the resolution data forms.
Do I have a motion to move its finance? reallocate 2020 budgeted funds to cover overages? Second? Sue? Any discussions? Al?
Chairman, none of the departments have to do a budget amendment to cover their 189 account. We'll be doing a master resolution county-wide for that account.
Well, that makes it easy. Thanks, Al. Glenn?
So the second one is the EMPG grant funding reallocation, which we do every year. So that grant spans two fiscal years. So we have some monies left in the 2020 budget that we need to pull forward into 2021 from that grant funding. So we have three different moves that we need to make for that. And I've outlined them all there. I don't know if we want to check with the treasurer on how he wants to do that, but we outlined them all separately. And then we have the next one in line down below, which is the EMPGS, which is the supplemental, which funds some of the COVID PPE that we're required to have on hand for the state projects from COVID. So everything is outlined, both in the report and on the resolution data forms. You want to do that differently, Al?
No, that looks good.
Okay. Need a resolution to move those forward to finance? Do I have a motion to move that forward? So move. Dave, second? Sue, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of moving to finance? Mike, opposed? Okay, they're on the finance.
So next, obviously, we continue the county's response to the COVID-19. We're starting to see the increases in our cases here again locally. Vaccine efforts are continuing. And we are happy to report, we actually just got back from the Hudson Falls School that for this weekend, due to the work starting at Burgoyne, our last pod at the Burgoyne site will be this Thursday until the roof work is complete and we can get back in there safely. So we're going to relocate. The Hudson Falls School is going to host us this weekend, which will have about a 600-dose event there. That's going to be two 200-second dose events that we're putting together and a new 200-first dose event. So Dr. Hunter and the staff at Hudson Falls School have been absolutely great and welcoming to us. That'll give us a lot of room to work with, a lot of parking. So we're looking forward to that this weekend. We'll be working with the crew to get everything up there that we need up there and set up. So that's good news. The obvious changes that came out yesterday, that were in yesterday's daily announcement of vaccine increasing to 30 and over beginning today. Anybody who's on our registry will get the invite for that new 200-dose clinic on Saturday. So if you have anybody in your towns who haven't signed up for the vaccine interest registry on the website yet, please have them sign up. Those will go out first to the registry. And I'm happy to report also today, the EMS vaccination team, Cambridge EMS and their crew and the other EMS vaccination team members are out starting the homebound. So that's great. We're getting to that population. We got some of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, Public Health was able to acquire to be able to do homebound. So we're happy to report that that's ongoing as well. So the next item I have there is, we're just looking for some support that we reach out to our state elected officials. There are two bills, one in the assembly and one in the senate currently, to designate a public safety dispatcher statewide as certified first responders. That's something that's been ongoing the last couple of years. Both the State 911 Coordinators Association and the State Emergency Management Association have been continuing to push that forward. And it is back in the assembly and the senate. So just looking for some support from the board to reach out to our state electeds and ask that they support that bill.
Tim, could you tell me what that designation would do for them?
So this one basically is under the public health law. So this designation is not going to give anything for retirement, but it will open some avenues for other support for them that is designated for certified first responders under the law. That obviously, right now, public safety dispatchers are not designated as certified first responders under the law. So if there's anything in there that typically only pertains to certified first responders in name, they're not eligible to participate in any of those programs, be they mental health programs or anything of that. Like right now, it has no other implications as far as retirement or anything else.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, this is definitely the first step in moving forward and getting them to reclassify that position. I mean, certainly, the job that they do is much more than anything administrative or secretarial.
Any other business, Tim?
No, just the last note is April 11th through the 17th is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which nationwide recognizes public safety telecommunications. Normally, we do put together a week of events for our staff and our staff does some special things amongst themselves. We do a luncheon and some awards. This year, obviously, we're going to keep it curbed like we had to last year just because of COVID and trying to keep the center as healthy and safe as we can. So we are going to do some different things for them that won't fit everybody in one place all at the same time. But we appreciate the job they do and wanted to make sure that that was mentioned this week, that it's important that that's coming up.
Thank you, Tim. Anything else for Tim? For Glenn? Any other business? Sue? Mute?
Tim and Glenn, have you left? Have they left?
They're still here.
Tim, I've got questions from people asking about the, is it April 8th, that the vaccination changes to 16 and above?
It's the 6th, if I remember off the top of my head, next Saturday.
So next Saturday? And would the county accommodate that age group?
Certainly, once vaccination opens up to everybody, we're going to continue doing all eligible groups now that we can. And we did the registry. They can start to register now. So anybody who hasn't, they will be able to start to register now. And as soon as we meet those benchmarks that the governor announced yesterday, we are going all eligible all the time.
Amazing. Thank you.
Right? Yeah, Tim, on that same subject, is the group under 30, the 16 to 38 group, are they allowed to have any of the vaccines or can they only have certain ones?
So right now, the 18 and over is the Moderna, which is what we have been getting the most of. Pfizer is 16 and over. And the last I saw in Johnson &amp; Johnson is still 18 and over. They're still in trials, I believe, for anything under the age of 18 for Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson. I haven't seen any more changes on that. So really, the 16 to 18 population is kind of stuck in the Pfizer realm right now.
Okay, that's kind of what I heard. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Tim? Okay. Any other business? Any other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Somebody, thank you, Sue. All in favor? Forward. We're adjourned.